Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Is that a better take to see? I appreciate it. Good evening. Thank you so much for coming out. I'm Merrill Carroll, the president of the League of Women Voters of Richfield, and I'd like to welcome you all to the town forum tonight and thank our partner, the Richfield Library, for hosting this event. I'd also like to thank Gannon Ward and her voter service team for their hard work this evening, the National Charity League for being our greeters, and last but certainly not least, the candidates for participating in the forum. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. For those who are unfamiliar with the League of Women Voters, we are a nonpartisan political organization who encourages informed and active participation in government through education and advocacy. We do not support or oppose any political party or candidates. This year, the League, along with the library and our other partners, the Richfield Historical Society, the Keeler Tavern Museum, and History Center, and the Drumhead Chapter of Jordan's American Revolution, are planning some really very exciting programs in 2020 to explore the history of the women's suffrage movement and celebrate the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment giving women the right to vote. So keep an ear and an eye open for announcements about upcoming events. They're going to be really exciting, so we're really looking forward to it. And in the meantime, I hope that you'll join the League at our next Get to Know Your Town meeting next Tuesday with the Director of the Parks and Recreation at 10:30 a.m. at the town lower level conference room. Now, before I introduce our moderator, I'd just like to take care of some things that everyone needs to know about. Our moderator is going to introduce our candidates and explain the ground rules, but I'd just like to mention that the candidates for first selectmen, board of selectmen, and Board of Education were all invited to attend this forum. Unfortunately, Elizabeth Flobel is unable to participate this evening due to a previous professional commitment out of the country, and Brian Ward is also unable to attend due to a work commitment. I also want to remind you that the forum is being taped by the library this evening, and there is no other taping allowed in the forum. I'd also like to remind you, if you are wearing campaign material, I ask that you put it in your pocket for the evening. Inside the forum, there's no more materials or campaign buttons or paraphernalia allowed. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce our moderator, Mrs. Carol Fenslow from the League of Women Voters of the Bridgeport area. We are very, very fortunate to have Mrs. Fenslow tonight, this evening. She is a well-respected and experienced League debate and forum moderator. We've had her here before and enjoyed having her, and we are extremely grateful to her for driving all the way from Stratford to be here this evening. So, Mrs. Fenslow, I would let you take it over.
Thank you. I feel like I'm running for office. So, please make sure you turn off your cell phones, okay? It's one thing we always insist on. So, there will be no opening statement after this portion or the other forums this evening, but each candidate, beginning, let's say, about 10 minutes to eight, they'll have a minute and a half for a closing statement in which they can tell you all about, you know, all about themselves and what their hopes and dreams are. So, we'll make sure that we get that going. So, without further ado, I'm going to begin with, I just read the questions from the audience, and great questions. So, I'm going to begin with Mr. Jerry. "So, we teach our children to be kind, compassionate, and civil in dealing with each other. How will you be an example of these qualities in your dealings as a member of the Board of Education?"
First and foremost, I have three children in the elementary school here, and my husband and I always try to teach kindness through good works, volunteering in the community. As a school, I know that they have a Teach Kind program in the elementary school, which I applaud our PTA for bringing in, as well as other programs, as well as teaching our differences through respect, through kindness. Our recent legislation that has been out, because October is bullying prevention month, Bill 7215 clearly states that regional and local school boards should provide training for the intervention and prevention of any harassment or discrimination against targeted group of students.
Thank you. Same question, Mr. McAvoy?
So, I've been in town for about 20 years. We raised our two daughters here through Veterans Park, East Ridge, and the high school, and unfortunately have been privy to some of the bullying that's gone on with our daughters. We've spent a lot of time with the administration on mitigating that and some programs on how to solve that. So, we're well aware of some of the stuff that does go on in town. Myself, I do a lot of volunteer work in the forum. My kids certainly helped that through my CERT program and some of the other programs that we do, and we've taught them kindness from their kid.
Thank you. Mr. Steckler?
Hi. I also have one child here in town, my daughter in sixth grade. The thing I'm most proud of is her kindness. When she comes home from school every day, I ask her two questions. First question is, what was something kind that someone did today? And I follow that with, what was something kind that we did for someone else today? She takes it to heart. She really enjoys getting a question. She really enjoys answering.
Thank you. Mr. Schuber?
Excuse me, I have a recent Richfield high school grad at home, as well as a second grader, and a toddler. He's still figuring out kindness. Very interestingly, to Mr. Steckler, that is one of the traditions we have at our house also, is when we sit down to dinner, is asking, who was kind today? And how will we be kind to someone? And we're included in that. So, you know, it's a good reminder for us that kindness starts with us, and we lead by example, and they will follow, so.
Thank you. Mr. Checkerini?
Thank you for the question. I'm a father of a seven-year-old and a two-and-a-half-year-old, and I'm really impressed with the job that the school's doing in teaching kindness, especially at a young age. Unfortunately, it has to be started at a very young age, because bullying is started in kindergarten even. And I want to make sure that it doesn't just start in elementary school. It continues, sending the message that we have to be inclusive, share kindness, and continue to just be good citizens.
Thank you. So, we'll begin with Mr. McAvoy for the next question. "The Board of Education is once again undergoing a search for a new superintendent of schools. The superintendent is the only position in our school system who reports directly to the Board of Education. What qualities will you be looking for in a superintendent during the hiring process? And what should the top priorities of the new superintendent be?"
That's kind of a little question. So, first and foremost, this will be our fourth, if I count, in the last couple of years on the current board. That's terrifying, the stability at the top. What I would be looking for, and, you know, we put together a good team of people that have been in the business world for the most part. We've done hiring. We know what to look for in employees that we deal with day to day. But for superintendent, we're looking for somebody who can sit and see for more than a few months, more than a year. Myself, personally, I'm looking for somebody who's a little bit younger, perhaps, can bring the district further forward, maybe a little more technologically advanced than what we've seen before in terms of introducing some new teaching methodologies, some new technologies into the classrooms. I'd like to see somebody who can take a bigger view of the district. We've got a lot of problems that are all pitting at the same time in terms of facilities problems, in terms of curriculum being pushed down from the state, in terms of pensions being pushed down from the state. So, there's a lot of forces at work here aligning against us, and we need somebody that can take all of that as a macro view, and, uh, Tackler?
Thank you. Mr. Hughes-Steckler?
Well, this is the second full-time superintendent search that we've had in the past couple of years, and we'd like to point out that there were focus groups as well as service sent out to the community. We had over 800 members in the community communicate to us what they were looking for. Those focus groups identified the needs of classroom instruction experience, building leadership experience, as well as some experience leading in different, as well as being an exceptional communicator while being physically responsible. As with everything else we do, I focus my needs on what drives us here is the mission and vision of the district, personalized learning, fostering a treaty for growth for all students, wellness of body and mind, building an inclusive climate. So, those are the issues that are most forefront of my mind.
Mr. Schuber?
As we begin the search for superintendent, I think several qualities that we need to be looking for, and frankly, we need to find. We need a superintendent who's progressive and sees each student as an individual. And we need a former educator who empowers teachers to provide the education that each student needs and deserves. We need a pragmatic administrator who is physically responsible and responsive to the needs of our schools. And finally, we need a communicator, someone who will engage with the administration, with the staff, the board, and the community. And as far as his priorities, I think, his or her priorities, excuse me, I think he's got 5,000 priorities. I think each one of our students should be priority of the incoming superintendent.
Mr. Checkerini?
First, I would say that we need to step back from the vision of our superintendent. Our last superintendent, Dr. Collins, unfortunately left, and I think he was a very good hire, but we can give him the experience his full potential. When we look back to Dr. Baldwin, I think we have to start with one of the values that we're looking for is honesty and integrity, which is lacking under our tenure. So, honesty and integrity first, someone who has a long-term vision for our school. I'd also say that someone who's goal-driven in terms of developing students who maintain high standards and goals that are going to be putting their work forward. And lastly, not finding somebody who has a special interest. Our special interest in a superintendent should be education and our students.
Mr. Jerry?
I've been on hiring committees before for teachers in a district. I think it's really important that this person is able to work well with the board members. You know, one thing that's really important to note is that the Board of Education does not run the schools. They overlook policy, and that policy needs to be done effectively so that the school system can be run effectively. The job of a superintendent is 24/7. I hope that whoever is elected on November 5th can be a part of that process moving forward. And we need someone to look beyond the test results, someone who is just not going to look at assessments, but is going to look at our students being inclusive into the classroom, and also have good relationships with people, no bias, nobody coming with any hidden agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. So, our next question, beginning with Mr. Steckler. Should the school budget be higher or lower? And do we spend enough money on education?
We'll spend enough. I will know we spend enough money on education when we are showing growth for 100% of our students. Until we get to that point, more needs to be done. There are places within our current budget that we can always look to find efficiencies. However, there's not as much as one might think is there. 80% of the budget is people and their families, our people, people that are around our students on a given day. Another 6% is the transportation of those students to the classrooms. You take out all of the need-to-have, what's left to play with to find the efficiencies we would like to find is less than 5% of the overall. So, as far as whether or not we spend enough on our students, we'll know that when all of our students are driven and achieving.
Mr. Schuber?
Building on what Mr. Steckler said, I think the truest barometer of whether we're spending enough, I like to phrase it, spending effectively, is the success of each student. At the end of the day, I think there are efficiencies to be found in any budget. I'm a financial professional, I'm a CPA by trade and by training, and I think if there's money to be found there, I think I'm going to be able to find it. One of the things that I think would help with that is creating a budget-to-actual comparison so that on a monthly basis, we know how we're spending, we know what we're spending, and we know where we're spending.
Thank you. Mr. Checkerini?
Great question, and I think that we need to look at the budget and evaluate it from the bottom up. We can't just carry over budget from year to year. I'm not suggesting that we slash the budget by any percentage. We are closing in on $100 million yearly budget. You know, our schools certainly need that money, but there probably are efficiencies that we can look at, determine, you know, what's best for our building, what's best for our district, and figure out if there's some ways that's there and allocate it to different resources.
Mr. Jerry?
It's all about the kids. We have a $95 million budget. It's approximately 2/3 of our taxes. Are we doing enough? I don't know. I don't sit on the Board of Education right now. I need to be in those meetings with the stakeholders. We need more meetings with our Board of Finance and our Board of Selectmen. It's also important to note that the state, like Bill 7150, has things in there that could cause our excess cost reimbursement grant and our education cost sharing grant to disappear. Education cost sharing grant, we got back about $512,000 last year, and that's money leased on low-income families of the town. Our excess cost reimbursement grant covers about 70% to 77% of special education services, and that is in threat right now, also teacher pensions.
Thank you. Mr. McAvoy?
All right, so to build on what Rachel said, we are spending the lowest in our DRG per student. That's not a good metric to have. Are we spending effectively? Actually, one could argue that we're outperforming test score-wise, standardized tests, and every other metric. We're outperforming the dollars we're spending. So, dollars aren't necessarily tied to performance in our case. They are in a lot of other cases. But we are down 15% of students from our peak in around 2004. We're down about 700 students. We're projected to lose another 5%, so we're going to be down 20% from our peak, but we're spending more than ever, and that's projected to increase. When we talk about 80% of our budget being salaries, that's true, but that happens when you cut the 40% of facilities down to 20%, all of a sudden, that 80% is a magnified number. I think we need to look across the board at how we're working our facilities, our buildings. We're running the middle schools in 65% capacity. We're actually 200 kids below where we were when we built Scotts Ridge and took kids out of East Ridge. So, we need to look at everything.
Thank you. So, next question, beginning with Mr. Schuber. "The school start times controversy is on hold. What is your position on changing school start times? And how would you go back to the community for additional input and conversations before instituting any changes?"
Well, just like with any other initiative that the board will consider, I think it's an evidence-based decision. Is it going to help the children? Is it a better idea for the kids? In a, excuse me, situation like the school start times, the kids are really what's important. If, you know, parents need to be considered, siblings are considered, but ultimately, you know, what's better for the children? If there's a way to adjust start times, that all levels are going to make age-appropriate without spending millions of dollars. You know, I think with the right leadership of the superintendent, I think that that's something that we can accomplish if we get the right skill set in the board. You know, the financial analysis skills that I can bring to the board would help us do that. There are savings to be had in transportation. I think with the moving the pieces around, I think there is a way to that.
Mr. Checkerini?
Hi. The controversy, you spell live, actually, it's not dead. And, you know, the board presented in January 20 scenarios with a cost of over $2 million, and it was turned down. One voted for school start times to change. Personally, I think that school start times are really, it's kind of a square peg looking for a round hole. The town I grew up in absolutely could do school start times differently. It was one square mile. Our streets, our class day, we don't have that capability here. We've got windy roads, hilly roads, snow. That's very difficult for a lot of the buses to traverse. Now, add in the fact that a lot of the people who are forced our times were more concerned about the adolescents leaving out the elementary school kids. So, if you want to flip-flop and have older kids go to school later, you'd certainly have the younger kids going earlier. Personally, I wouldn't want my seven-year-old daughter out on the street at 7:30 in the morning in the snow waiting for a bus.
Thank you. Mr. Jerry?
I am not for starting school later, however, I am open to the conversation. First of all, I think sleep researchers are using this as a fix-all for the wellness of our students. However, let's really talk about the emotional, mental, and physical health of our kids. How do we do that? Really easy. Emotional health, right in the classroom. I was a teacher. You talk about respect, you talk about kindness, and you differentiate your learning for the kids. Mental health, so important. How are kids navigating those positive and negative emotions that they have? We just adopted Ruler, Ruler from Yale University. How we recognize, understand, label, express, and regulate our emotions? And the physical health of our students? Well, we have a phenomenal athletic program right here in Richfield Public Schools. Let's use it. Thank you.
Mr. McAvoy?
The SSL program should never have been designed as a standalone program. We've got so many moving pieces underneath us between the RHS schedule, which we're now talking about block scheduling and changing that around. We've got the longest day, school day, in the area. That needs to be perhaps looked at. Transportation, when you're talking about putting 28 new diesel buses on our roads during rush hour, that's a terrible idea. We're a four-tier bus system now, so it would cause a traffic nightmare. Again, the capacity issues at the middle school. Everything needs to be moved around to finish the work. A benefit may be that we can change start times. It was never designed to be a standalone thing here in town, and it's not a feature. It's a benefit.
Thank you. Mr. Steckler?
We fall back on the cost of transportation as a reason to do wrong by our children. We say that we spend too much on transportation, even though within our own district, we spend less per student than New Canaan, Westport, Wilton, even with our diverse geography, nine different school campuses. In fact, in 2016, '17, we spent $949 per student. Statewide average is only $900, so we're very close to the average cost per student on transportation. However, instead of spending more in that area, we take our elementary school students and break them into two groups of 1,000 each and say to one group, you get a half an hour less playtime after school every day for the rest of your elementary career. We take another 1,600 students, adolescents, who cannot function as well as they otherwise should at a 7:30 start time, and we make them do that anyway, because that's what we've always done, because that's what we have shown ourselves willing to pay for transportation.
Thank you. Next question, beginning with Mr. Checkerini. Oh, you can move on, yes. You have 30 seconds.
Am I not for my children if I'm worried about families in the morning providing before-school and after-school care? Am I not for our children if I'm thinking about extracurricular activities after school? Am I not for our children if I'm thinking about tutoring? And am I not for our children if I'm thinking about family time for our children? Thank you.
So, Mr. Checkerini, that's a representative for the Board of Education. How do you feel about online bullying?
Good question. I'm sorry, sir? Yeah, you know, you're part of that crew as well.
Oh, you said as well. Oh, you said as well, please.
Excuse me?
Thank you for your comment. Is that Al Tarris?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. You know, we're talking about education. Online bullying between the children is absolutely unacceptable. As part of the first question we asked about kindness, I think we need to expand the kindness programs, you know, going from the lower grades up to the upper grades, and even to some of the members in this room here.
Thank you. Mr. Jerry?
There's no place for online bullying. It's childish. And you know who the kids are looking at? Us. So, when you're online, and you're bullying, and you're bullying a candidate, or you don't agree with somebody, we could be respectful with our words. Let's show our kids how it's done. Thank you.
Mr. McAvoy?
Again, I've been with others. They've been the subject of bullying over time, both middle school, high school, and it's terrible. And again, you know, there are members of the community who are starting this compassionate Richfield group here in town to instill kindness, but some of the same members that are involved in that group are the same members bullying other parents in this town. It's terrible. We need to solve for that.
Mr. Steckler?
Members of the Board of Education, members of the community at large, adults in town, need to model appropriate behavior.
Mr. Schuber?
Bullying in any form has no place in societies in general, but very specifically in the classroom. Anything that interferes with a child's learning, with their social, emotional growth, has no place anywhere in town. That's really much on the side of that.
Thank you. Beginning with Mr. Jerry. Candidates and incumbents frequently talk about all the good things that have been done in the school district. But in your view, what are some of the things that the district has not done well that you would change?
I don't think there's anything that I would change off the bat, but I want to have thoughtful conversations with people. I'm not a bulldozer, but I'd like to ask questions. Like with our curriculum development and our math program, I would like to ask Mr. Crowell a couple of questions, and I'd like to ask him, why are we moving away from math in focus now and have just purchased math in practice for our teachers? Why is he dwelling on 10% that we have dumped up in our assessments? Isn't that so wonderful? However, we are, we're at 68%, so now we're only at 78%. Why are the numbers so important?
Mr. McAvoy?
I'll take a little bit different, slightly from Rachel. She has more experience on the curriculum side. But back to the facilities problem. We've got, despite our spending level in our DRG being below everybody else, we're turning out kids at a very high-performing level. Our teachers and administrators are doing an incredible job there. I want to give them facilities that match the achievement that we've been providing ourselves. You walk into any of our elementary schools, I can't point to one of those and say, this is a showcase that I would want to bring a prospective Richfield resident with, with Wilton, and that's kind of terrifying to me. We've got VP has been renovated since 1957. Scotland since 1965. Our most recent renovation was during the bundle, almost 20 years ago. It's unacceptable.
Mr. Steckler?
Few opportunities for more investment in our community's education system include the curriculum and administration and the facilities areas. This is the first time starting this year that we have a staff supervisor K-12. I'm happy to see that that was an internal hire. So, now we have a fully-serving curriculum department, which is great. Overall, that administrative area in our district has been very much underfunded, not only below the rest of the district, but actually below state average on administration spending per student. Facilities as well. The facilities budget for repairs and projects was cut almost in half the year after Sandy Hook. Those dollars went in that budget to guards and SROs in our buildings, and it was cut from that area. Thankfully, this year, with a lot of good work between the Board of Education, Board of Finance, and the Board of Selectmen, we were able to put through a budget that did reinstall the time that was, the money that was cut from that.
Thank you. Mr. Schuber?
Yes, first of all, I think that is a wonderful approach to starting a new endeavor. You need to sit back, you need to listen to the community. What does the community think the board needs to accomplish? What does the community think the board has of doing as well as it could? You know, regarding curriculum, no money should be spent on any program that's not evidence-based. It's a disservice to our children to continue with a curriculum because that's what we did the previous year. You know, results should be the deciding factor on continuing any methodology. And over the last few years, as Donovan was mentioning, you know, the facilities budget, you know, has been deeply impacted by the increased need for security. You know, gun violence in our country, you know, is a discussion for another day, but, you know, there's no doubt that it has had a detrimental effect on our children, you know, in our schools. You know, I do know that our current board has made it hard to rectify that shortfall. You know, just over this past summer, 90 infrastructure projects were completed.
Mr. Checkerini?
So, this past summer, a lot of facilities work was done in the schools, and, you know, appropriately, a lot of it looks really good. But many of it has fallen through the cracks for years, and it took a lot of kicking and screaming from parents and students alike to kind of raise their arms up to the board and say, you know, why are the bathrooms at East Ridge so high and far above the mountain, constantly leaking any time there's a drizzle? Why are handicapped ramps non-ABA compliant? So, when we talk about facilities, obviously, you know, you're talking about a good portion of budget. You have to work with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, but the priorities are set by the Board of Education. And I think when you talk about Scotland having asbestos and that being kicked down the road for years upon years, you start to get a little worried some. So, facilities and our priorities, what facilities are, really needs to be addressed.
Thank you.
Yes.
Back to facilities again. You know, we did these 90 projects over the summer, and it's a credit to the town. It's great. The kids aren't stupid. So, in the high school, we've got a high schooler. They've already figured out that the bathrooms that we just renovated are the ones in the A-way where the visitors are most likely to go. The rest of the school, not so good. So... So we've been getting interesting pictures about these other places, but we need to do what's right for these kids and get facilities moving.
Thank you. So, beginning with Mr. McAvoy. What can the Board of Education do to reduce the academic and social pressure felt by students?
Wow, anxiety is a huge problem. We're going through that in our household. Just personal anecdote, what we did recently was our high schooler went into the guidance counselor office, I think for the first time in her high school career, and talked about the AP programs. Our kids are very big on taking, is loading up on AP courses and doing as much achieving as they can. Our guidance counselor actually de-escalated the entire thing. So as a result this year, our high school has taken zero AP courses and worked regularly. She's considering taking one or two next year. It's brought the anxiety level in our house way down. I think it needs to be built from the parents, but reinforced by the schools. And it's working for us. I encourage others to have that conversation with their guidance counselor. You don't have to take 100% of your time in AP courses.
Thank you. Mr. Seckler.
There is an article in last week's Washington Post that referenced a study that was done by the National Academies of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine, in which they identified a new group of at-risk students. At-risk groups included children in foster homes, children in high poverty, children of incarcerated parents, and to that list they added children in high-achieving schools. They also, in that article, referenced the Challenge Success Survey from 2018. Our own results here in our district showed word clouds of our middle school students and our high school students' responses to the questions. Front and center in the middle school was the word fun. It's the largest word in the word cloud. Front and center in the high schools was the word stressful. It's very upsetting. I am proud of the things that have happened over the past couple of years. Ruler has rolled out in all of our elementary schools. We were able to add three psychologists to the budget for elementary schools this past year. So I'm happy that work has been done, but there's a lot more to do.
Thank you. Mr. Schober.
As we all know, we do live in a very stressful society. And you know, as the Challenge Success Survey showed, you know, our students are feeling it more acutely than ever before and in higher levels even than the national average. You know, I've seen it in my high schooler, I've seen it in my second grader, you know, and I've heard it from my wife, who is a fourth-grade teacher in the district. You know, I would like to build on the steps that this is currently taking. As has been mentioned by many on the panel here, the Ruler teacher training has been implemented, and that's great. Comfort dogs, those are great also. And they're both evidence-based programs. We implemented them because they work. One way that I've seen the socially-emotional needs of students addressed at other schools is getting school psychologists into the classrooms on a regular proactive basis, you know, rather than them reacting to a student who's already in crisis.
Mr. Cheperini.
You know, any high schooler is going to find a certain amount of anxiety and pressure. Show me one who doesn't have anxiety and pressure. It's probably not that interested in their education. As a parent, a lot of that anxiety is going to come from, I'm sorry, a lot of that help is going to come from home. So psychologists in schools certainly going to help very much, but a lot of times, kids will resist that help. It's when they get home that parents need to identify some of the issues and then work with the students, I'm sorry, work with the parents of these, or with the teachers of these students, to help reduce their anxiety. One other aspect of reducing the anxiety would be participating in sports. So sports, working out, things of that nature certainly have outlets for anxiety. It's all part of having balanced education as well around.
Thank you. Mr. Jerry.
I was a math teacher in the seventh-grade math classroom, and one thing I always tried to do was teach respect for my students and have a positive environment. If you can believe it, I was very enthusiastic when I used to teach. And I used to have the mission possible of the day. And I used to do, "The mission possible today is..." and whatever it was. And I would try to engage my students, whether it be through technology or video conferencing with NASA. And I think a lot can be done right in the classroom when addressing the academic and social pressures with children. It's how you're acting. They feed off of you. Just like when you're at home and you're a parent, maybe you had a bad day, you know, take a moment back and then engage with your child. I do believe it starts at home. Differentiating instruction in the classroom. Events like my children had the Boogie Beaver this week, choose kind. You know, our PTA definitely, I want to say again, they are fabulous in trying to help our children with those social pressures out there, making friends. Thank you.
2018, 2019 school year, we spent about $140,000 on SSL consultants. At the same time, we pulled two school psychologists out of the budget. Board told us at that time we didn't need them. All of a sudden, they reappeared in 2019, 2020 budget. So we must have needed them somewhere. So when we talk about school psychologists being really important, I hope that we put our money where our mouth is. One clarification, can you clarify the format? Allow us for one rebuttal per...
No, I'm being lenient.
So it's two?
Go ahead. That was my rule. Okay, so beginning with Mr. Seckler. As an elected member of the Board of Education, you are an agent of the state, and you are required to implement Connecticut's educational laws. How will you perform your duties if these statutes conflict with your own views?
Good question. Back to the first. As a member of the Board of Education, we are agents of the state, acting... The job of a member of the Board of Education, even though we're an agent of the state, is to ensure that we're taking care of 5,000 children in our town while keeping in the back of our minds the needs of the community as a whole. That said, the legislation that comes our way is up to us to implement. It's not my personal decision as to whether or not to choose to agree with any piece of legislation that comes down the line. I have to hope that any piece that comes to us is coming from the right frame of mind, and it is to expect it to be to the benefit of our students.
Mr. Schober.
Again, you do hope that the legislature has passed a mandate that do take our children's interests first. But just like, you know, working on the board, not everyone's going to have the same opinion. Not everybody's going to support the same things. But it's something that we have to work together and work through in order to be successful, in order to continue with Ridgefield being the top performing school district that it is.
Mr. Cheperini.
As a Board of Education member, I'm one of nine people, hopefully. And if there was something I disagreed with from the state as a mandate, you know, I would have to consider what is right for our students, not necessarily what is right for me. So, you know, I think it's pretty cut and dry in many cases now. If all nine Board of Ed members had issues with the state mandate and many other districts are having the same issues, we maybe need to look at that mandate and, you know, provide feedback back to the state. But as an individual, I'm only limited to my one vote. My vote is for what's best for our students.
Mr. Jerry.
I agree with Rob, whatever best for our students. I come with no agenda. I will listen to the community. My role is to follow the Connecticut statutes, and we're collaborating with the Board of Education. You know, the board goals of, you know, supporting the district priorities, good stewardship, fiscal responsibility, the mission and vision of the graduate, and communication and accountability.
Thank you. Mr. McAvoy.
Back to what Rob said, though, as one of nine people, you only have so much individual power, actually no individual power. You work as a board. And some of the mandates coming down, the board has disagreed with. Let's take, hands off our school initiative that was global, we went together last spring. The Board of Ed did send finally a resounding note that we were not in favor of regionalization here in town, that they were proposing as proposed. So again, as one of nine, we don't get to act, we don't get to act as a board. And the mandates that have been passed so far, we have to deal with those. And if we disagree, we have to disagree as a board, and it needs to be pretty unanimous.
Okay, beginning with Mr. Schober. What do you think is the most, and we've probably heard the answers before, but as residents of Ridgefield, probably it helps to hear them again. What is your most important thing that a member of the Board of Education should do? So, Mr. Schober.
I think that the most important thing that a Board of Education member should do is remember why we're there. And again, we're there for the children. We're there to make sure that every one of them is able to achieve the level of success that they can achieve. You know, we, every student learns differently. Every student has different challenges, whether they're emotional, social, educational. And each one of those children needs to be met where they are and lifted up to where they can be.
Mr. Cheperini.
As I sit here tonight, I'm thinking about my seven-year-old, and I'm looking at my watch. Just now, I'm thinking of, you know, it's time to read before we go to bed. You know, and that's my interest, is my children. As a Board of Ed member, it's all of the children. So yeah, that's the answer that pretty much everybody's going to say. But, you know, it starts from what the Board of Ed can do. And you can oversee the administration, you can oversee the budget, and obviously oversee the superintendent. And I think that's where our next focus of this is, making sure we hire the right superintendent to help care for our children the way we want to care for our children.
Mr. Jerry.
I completely agree. It's all about the kids. And the next charge is to hire a capable, competent superintendent so that we can work with them and sustain and grow as a phenomenal school district.
Mr. McAvoy.
I'll echo the kids, obviously, come first. But for me, the last couple of years have been with difficulty in having the board communicate properly with the community. So I think first and foremost, the board needs to be better at communicating its intentions with the community early, often transparently, for all residents, not just parents. We've got other stakeholders in town that 70% of the tax bill goes to the schools. They have an interest here, and they want to hear how this is being handled in a transparent manner. So we need to be very, very upfront. We recently had a thing about the Farmingville school class sizes. That could have been headed out earlier by just communicating with the parents, letting them know what was going on, working with them ahead of time instead of waiting for it to come to a head in that tackling that has a crisis management problem.
Mr. Seckler.
Personalized learning experience and growth for each and every one of the 5,000 students that are going to come through our district over the next four years are the only issues that are at the top of any Board member's day. It is growth for each and every one, not for most, not for many, not for a little bit more than last year. It's growth for every one of our students. And we can't stop with oversight. Oversight is an important part of the job. We have to oversee a budget, we have to oversee an administration, we have to oversee curriculum, but we also need foresight. We need to see what's coming, we need to know where we're trying to get to, and we need to make sure that we're steering in that direction.
So we'll make this the last question before the candidates closing comments. And we will begin with Mr. Cheperini. The current Board of Education has been vocal about opposition to regionalization efforts by the state of Connecticut. Do you agree that regionalization would be bad for Ridgefield? And if yes, are there any regionalization efforts you could support?
Back earlier this year when the idea of regionalization was floated by Connecticut lawmakers, I stood against the regionalization of our schools. And that doesn't mean that I'm against regionalization of different aspects of supporting various schools. So that could be from shared resources. It could be, you know, purchasing large amounts of supplies at lower rates that are shared throughout areas of neighboring schools. As far as the regionalization of all schools, I am firmly against it.
Mr. Jerry.
I'm against the regionalization of Connecticut public schools. Regionalization is going to cause Board of Eds to combine, districts to combine, and central office staffs to combine. This in turn is going to close school buildings, decrease teacher positions, decrease our administration, and increase student-to-teacher ratio. You know, maximizing the cost efficiency here definitely overlooks the consequences of student achievement, and that's really important. Having a larger district, you're going to have more bureaucracy and less parent and student engagement into the schools. Then that's going to lead to a high absenteeism rate. That is one of the indicators on our next-generation accountability index. If we have empty school buildings in town, they're going to be ghostly structures. Let's think again, and let's think about student achievement first.
Mr. McAvoy.
All right, I'm going to flip this backwards. You're asking if it's bad for Ridgefield. We've, at the benefit of speaking to a lot of constituents during this process, spoke to a wonderful, dynamic, 90-year-old couple. One of them was a teacher up in Avon, Connecticut, where they had regionalization. They were bringing kids in from Hartford. So the answer is, is it bad for Ridgefield? No, it's probably bad for Danbury. What they found was kids sitting on a bus for an hour, hour and a half to get here, they're not able to participate in after-school events. They don't really integrate because they don't live the same culture that perhaps we do here. They have to go home afterwards on an hour-and-a-half bus ride, so they're not spending as much time on campus. What they found is that the kids may catch up to us in a year or two, but if that, they have to go back to their home district, they may find themselves ahead of that district and not well-suited there. So is it bad for Ridgefield? To be determined. Maybe there's some back-office things that could be combined. But I think it'd be detrimental for surrounding communities that need to bus in. Why don't we lift the kids up where they are, instead of trying to bring them somewhere else?
Thank you. Mr. Seckler.
The bill was voted last year by our state legislators, were not well thought through, even though none of them suggested busing students longer distances into other districts. We have to look back and see what we're trying to solve if we go back down the regionalization route. Is it to cut the cost of back-office functions? If that is the idea behind it, then we can do things before regionalization to get rid of current state barriers between two neighboring districts sharing back-office functions. If however, what we're looking to do at the state level is to reduce inequality in Connecticut education overall, then we have to be clear that that's what we're trying to do and work with localities and with members of the state legislature to help design how to take a lowest-performing district up without reducing the performance of a higher-performing district.
Mr. Schober.
No, to follow on what Mr. Seckler was saying and to tie it back into what we were discussing about mandates earlier, I think if regionalization is something that is on the board, or excuse me, on the table for discussion, I think the board needs to participate in that discussion. I think Hartford needs to know how Ridgefield feels. Instead of waiting for the mandates to come down, I think that Ridgefield could play a hand in actually designing the mandates. And if we have a say in what regionalization looks like across the state, then maybe that's something that we could get to work for Ridgefield.
So, we will begin with Mr. Cheperini. A minute and a half, tell us all about yourself and what your hopes and dreams are.
Thank you so much. So for those of you who don't know me, I've been here in town for two years, and I moved from Scarsdale with my wife and two daughters. Daughter's been seven years old, Allison at Barlow Mountain, and I have a two-and-a-half-year-old. And I am a very proud father, and I'm really excited to be in Ridgefield and participate in this event tonight. Now, why am I running for the Board of Ed is what a lot of people ask me. And part of the reason is that I bring a unique perspective. I came here from Scarsdale, a very high-functioning school district in Rochester, one of the best in the state, actually. And I'm not against change in any way, but I do see that if I can come into Board of Ed, there may be things that have been going on within the district that have always been done that way, you know, quote-unquote. You know, sometimes you just gotta, you know, break some of the habits that we had. So part of my hopes and dreams are, for my children, to, you know, excel in school as well as the rest of the school students. But I really want to make smart kids who are goal-driven, okay? And then part of that is also, you know, building our community between parents, the Board of Ed, and the administration, okay? I don't want to sing kumbaya, but you do have a really good thing going on here, and I'd like you to continue with some improvements.
Thank you.
Thank you, by the way.
Thank you. Sorry. Mr. Jerry.
I'd first like to thank the League of Women Voters and Ridgefield Public Library and the rest of the candidates for being here this evening, as well as the community who came out to support us and hear our views tonight. Thank you. I'd also like to thank, I have a very supportive husband. I'm a mother, I'm an educator, and I'm a taxpayer. I have a lot of enthusiasm. I'm going to bring my strong work ethic, a sense of responsibility to the Board of Education, as well as my passion and experience, and work together with the other Board of Ed members to keep excellence in Ridgefield public schools. Thank you.
Mr. McAvoy.
All right, a little about the, we've been in town over twenty years now. Two kids, one is just graduated from UConn, a mechanical engineering major, now gainfully employed. She would not be there without the school district that she went through here, again, through VP, Stridge, and the, and the high school, and the science teachers that brought her back from hating science and that. So, she's now doing very well in an engineering field in aerospace, and we've got a sixteen-year-old junior at the high school that's headed on the same trajectory, loves science, loves math. It's because of our educators, it's the only reason that happens. Our STEM program is, is starting to flourish, I love to see that. We now have somebody heading that program, we're changing the curriculum around, love to see it. A little bit about my background, I run the emergency response volunteer team, the CIR team here, reports to Rudy ultimately as our emergency manager. We're the ones that put the town back on the grid when bad things happen, you lose power for a week. Forty-four volunteers, about a hundred and forty total volunteers. We revolutionized during the last four storms in 2018, the way we communicate with the town. We've made it much more online-based, much more real-time, much more customer-focused, and being able to give that information back to our constituents, back to the fire police, back to the town, much quicker than we used to. We need to bring a lot of that same kind of discipline of information in, information out, to the Board of Ed.
Mr. Steckler?
About two years ago, Betsy DeVos was, was Secretary of Education, and that's when I raised my hand and decided to step up, enact locally to safeguard children. In my professional life, I combine long-term strategic planning with ensuring the needs of today are met, and I bring the same skill set to my role in public service. On the board, ensuring today's needs are met means oversight of the budget, of the curriculum, of the performance of our superintendent, of our student outcomes, and overall adherence to our mission and vision. But the job doesn't stop at oversight. Long-term strategic planning requires foresight, and I'm proud to have been named the Chair of the Strategic Planning Committee on the Board of Education. Understanding change is coming our way, locally in enrollment, for example, or statewide through legislation, we can plan for change to continue to benefit our students, and we can gain the trust of our community that the community rightly expects through clear communication of what's coming, why it's coming, what we are doing about it, and what results we expect. I'm a proven consensus builder, and the board has, only has power to, to make any decisions by consensus. I have excellent working relationships with all of my board colleagues because this job's goal is kids, not politics, and I always maintain focus on the academic, social, and emotional growth of all our students.
Mr. Schelber?
First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mrs. Fenslow, and the League of Women Voters, and especially for all of you for coming out to hear us speak today, as well as my colleagues up here at the table. This is a volunteer position that we're all campaigning for, and so that is gonna take time away from our families and our own children, but it's that important to go there. I'm, personally, I'm ready for a seat on the Board of Education to make sure that every child in Ridgefield has the same opportunity for quality education. It's imperative that we keep the bar high for all the children, making sure that each one of them can achieve success, whatever that looks like to that particular child. And as I see it, to echo Mr. Steckler, strategic planning is key to building our school system as sustainable into the future. You know, we, we can't afford to set on our laurels as, you know, a top-performing school district. What the world looked like, you know, ten years ago isn't what the world's gonna look like ten years from now. The way that can be accomplished on the board is, though we're statutorily limited to an annual budget, creating a pro forma budget would allow us to, to plan for some of these challenges that are gonna come down the road, whether it's gonna be societal, whether it's going to be legislative. You know, if we don't know where we're going, how are we gonna get there? You know, we, we can be as aspirational as we want to be, you know, but it takes planning to turn those aspirations into realities for our kids. I traded, and as I mentioned before, I'm a CPA, and I specialize in fraud risk management and internal controls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, please thank our candidates for bringing Again, for selectmen, there will be no opening statements, but they will each have a minute and a half to end to tell you all about themselves. So, wonderful questions from your audience. So, beginning with Mr. Moshe. It's been noted that commercial development is encroaching on residential development. Is this statement accurate as it applies to Ridgefield?
I think if you drive around town, I think that is an accurate statement. Part of the cause, as we all know, we've heard about 830G, the Affordable Housing Statute, which allows multi-units to be built in areas that you wouldn't normally build in. There are things that can be done if we could get the state to help amend the 830G statute to give some relief to towns the size of Ridgefield. What works in Banbury or Bridgeport or Norwalk is not applicable to what happens in Ridgefield. So, we need to be lobbying in Hartford to have that 830G statute amended to give some relief. We've heard a lot about the WPCA and the increase in capacity, hopefully. These type projects are not gonna help in that project, which is too much development too fast and crowded area.
Thank you. Mr. Marconi?
Thank you, and thank you to the League tonight for everyone being here. I believe the question was about commercial development?
Yes.
Eight dash thirtyG is residential development?
Yes.
And, I'm sorry?
Residential development, yes.
Eight dash thirtyG is residential development. Although that's an issue I'm sure will be addressed later on, I'd rather address the question which has to do with commercial development. One of the issues that confronted our community was the skating rink over on Peaceville. Was that in fact a commercial development? Many people believe yes. I would agree with that. Would that have been an encroachment? Absolutely. If you looked at the rehab facility that was planned for Old West Mountain Road, would that have been a commercial development? Although the application only said on the surface fourteen when you read it, it was actually up to forty-two rooms becoming a true commercial development. So there have been efforts, but they've been denied or withdrawn. Thank you.
Beginning with Mr. Marconi. What will be your top priorities for the next two years in office?
Thank you. It's a four-year term. I can do it to him, too. But the, for the next four years, you know, time goes by quickly, and it doesn't seem that four years is all that long, to be very honest with you, but we have a lot of things that we have on the horizon, and we need to keep track of those. The 2021 project involving our state Route Thirty-five, which is our main street, a lot of people don't realize that that is a state highway. They own it, they have the right to do what they want, but we've been very diligent and have worked for the last two years to be sure that only a minimal amount of trees will be cut, three at the most, not the whole town. That the widening will not take place, it'll be a curb-to-curb, Mill and Page, basically, with three striping that'll add turn lanes for a better flow of traffic. That's critical for our community. The TOD development in Branchville, where we have transportation, where affordable housing should be placed, where people can have the opportunity to take the bus to ride the train, that's on the horizon, and there are many other projects. Critical is development, and a lot of people are looking at the eight dash thirtyG. That has played a role. We have right now about seventy-eight units that have been approved, maybe more to come. I could see it approaching one hundred quite easily. A lot of that has been attributed and is attributable to the fact that we had a moratorium that we were very successful at achieving. We got two hundred units, two hundred and two, two hundred and ten, somewhere in there, that allowed us to qualify for a moratorium for four years. During those four years, as you know, there was a recession, there was a pent-up demand, builders had to build, and they came in with those affordable housing projects. Some of them were in the gray area. I don't know outside of the sewer district is where we want to be building eight dash thirtyG. I think it's a problem for the future, and I would work toward addressing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moshe?
I think that for the next four years, we have to start looking at a better evaluation of how we pave our roads and how we evaluate them and do a better job on our road maintenance. I also think that we have to look at how we are maintaining our schools, as discussed by the Board of Ed candidates. There's been a lack of maintenance money provided to them, whatever fault, whether the Board of Ed did not tell the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, it hasn't happened. So I think a priority has to be for our kids on the schools. I also think that we need to have better customer service when people have complaints, whether it's blight, whether it's potholes, whether it's trees, different issues. We should be setting up a new system for customer service that they can get a work order number. There's an app that you can use that Wilton uses, it's called Click Fix, where they can take a picture, send it into the town, the town can assign a work order number, and they can start to work on it. Wilton has it, they, and I checked their website, didn't say over what period of time, but they have sixteen uses, sixteen hundred uses of this Click Fix. Also, I think we need to do better in looking for state and federal grants. Our department has to do a good job, but they have other responsibility. I think we should start looking outside for professional grant writers who work on a contingency basis. That would help us get more projects and help the local taxpayers. Everything we do in the next four years should be geared for trying to hold taxes down, trying to provide better customer service, do a better job of our roads. There are people on Florida Hill, Ridge Baron Road, George Washington Highway who are driving down a pothole waiting for a road to break out.
Our timers, some of them are getting more time.
Two minutes.
Okay, okay, is it two minutes they're getting?
Two minutes, because there's less alcohol.
The first timer was less.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry.
We can adjust if we're not.
May I have a rebuttal, please?
All right, yes.
And how much time on the rebuttal?
Yes, thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, thank you. Everything that my opponent has said can be true but costs money, and we have to be very careful of how we spend money. The current Board of Selectmen, I don't need to tell you, we worked very hard to bring in a zero percent increase this past year. That wasn't easy. We eliminated seven positions. We helped reduce the budget. The roads, we need to address, there's no question about that. The quality of the material, as many other towns in this area have said, it's the quality of the material from Pilkonne that's a problem, and we're need, we need to address that with the state of Connecticut. It's no sense to keep paving and throwing good money after bad until we can get good material, and we're demanding that. Our schools are getting in better shape, and my time is up.
Thank you.
I have pretty much thirty-one, so I'll wait until...
So, next question, beginning with Mr. Moshe. As first selectman, what actions would you take to preserve the small-town feel of Ridgefield while allowing economic growth and development?
That has been, I think, the heart of a lot of discussions that's gone on during the campaign already. I think, getting back to what we talked about, the eight thirtyG, I think that we need to be lobbying Hartford, not just for Ridgefield, the other small towns that are affected by the affordable housing. Rudy's pointed out, he's done some things, that's fine, but we need to do more with the state, and I think that our first selectman should be in Hartford. We are, he is president of COS, he's a board member of Connecticut Council of Municipalities. They should be lobbying to help relieve the pressures that these kind of statutes place on small towns. I think Rudy's campaign manager on Facebook said that it's a dreadful law, and it is. It only is a boondoggle for many developers. So I think that is one of the concerns. The other concern is the amount of traffic and trucks that are coming through town. We have to do more. The first selectman should be using the bully pulpit with the state of Connecticut to do more to keep trucks off our roads, no street truck signs, more cooperation with the state police to have weigh stations on yet coming in on Thirty-five to make sure they're registered, they're not overweight. You know, and I know, you sit in front of a coffee shop on Main Street on a beautiful summer day, and you cannot hear yourself talk for a thing, the trucks are roaring by. It takes leadership, it takes the bully pulpit, you can do it. It's a democratic leadership up there. Last I checked, Rudy's a Democrat, I would hope that he'd have a little, little influence on there and do a little bit more to relieve the truck traffic and all traffic in Ridgefield today.
Mr. Marconi?
Here we get the question, please.
Yes. As first selectman, what actions would you take to preserve the small-town feel of Ridgefield while allowing economic growth and development?
Land use is a planning and zoning issue. The first selectman is not charged with the responsibility of land use. That's specific in our state statutes. It's eight dash two that gives it to planning and zoning, and overall, they try and do a good job. But what we need to be concerned about, and what the Board of Selectmen, the first selectman need to begin looking at, is how McCannan developed. And if you look at McCannan, a lot of the areas where there were older homes, nice neighborhoods, and they're still nice neighborhoods, but a lot of infilling has started, and it's changed the character of their downtown. Our main street was once said by Eleanor Roosevelt to be the most beautiful main street in our country, and I think it still is, and we have to work to preserve that. And if planning and zoning's hands are tied with eight dash thirtyG, then we need to think outside think outside the box. We need to be more creative. We need to begin working with landlords in advance. We don't react to an eight dash thirty G application. We are proactive and work out in advance of that by contacting them and working out solutions that are better in the long term for our community to preserve our main street. Economic development is a critical issue. Many people here have said, we need more non-residential tax revenue, but it's tough to get. We had Slumberjack, they left town. The only one we have now is Barry or Engelheim. And in 2007, as many people can attest to, I worked very hard to keep them here because under the previous zoning regulations, they were relocating all of their expansion to either Virginia or Ohio. And I went to work with planning and zoning, and they did the job. They made the zoning happen to keep them here, and the result was a $500 million expansion that'll send their taxes from what were about six million a year up to about $10 million per year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree, meeting with the landlords, but I still say, if you can be active, proactive with them, and we need to be proactive with the state, and it still boils down to, yes, it is a beautiful main street, but is it going to stay that way? Is it going to stay that way? The traffic is killing this town, you all know it, you're on Main Street. The cultural aspects of Ridgefield will never change. They're there, Lounsbury, Keeler, the Ridgefield Playhouse, the New Theater. But unless we do something to stop people from using our main street as a cut-through and the trucks to avoid Route Seven, it will never be the main street it used to be.
Thank you. Next question, beginning with Mr. Marconi. Without getting into the background as to why we need to spend so much money on the sewer treatment project, do you think that the current sewer tax is spared to users of the system and other town taxpayers?
You know, that's a good question. Being in the sewer district and having two units and encouraging the increase is not something I like at all. I truly don't. As Peggy and I work on a okay income, we keep our heads above water. But that was a lot of money for us, and I can only imagine how much it is for those fixed incomes or the special needs community in our, in our community that live around town. We need to do something about that. We need to take a look at it. We need, as the WPCA, by the way, my opponent mentioned that we are increasing capacity, we are not. There's no capacity increase in the new design whatsoever. We heard that loud and clear several years ago, you may not remember, but from the people in this town that did not want us to increase the capacity. The sewer situation, I called New Canaan, I had a long talk with Kevin Moynihan, a Republican, and New Canaan were good friends. And basically, New Canaan looked at Ridgefield and said, our system was bad, they did it based on the assessed value of a home. And when they looked at our community, we have thirty-five different categories based on water usage, and a lot of people don't understand that. The fee is a flat fee, but it's allocated based on the amount of water you consume, depending on what your end use is. So water use is taken into consideration. Is it a lot of money? Yes, but if we change the system, it's a mandated issue we need to address. The state DEEP, if we don't comply, will bring us to court, put us under a court order, fine us, and then there go twelve million in grant money. And I don't think we want to be. So is it a lot of money? Yes, I understand that. And we need to work for the seniors and the special needs community. And we will do that as a WPCA, as a member, and I'm not the chairman. As a member, I've already spoken to the chairman about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moshe?
Yes, and maybe I misspoke earlier, I was saying that with all the housing coming in and we're not increasing capacity, how is that going to affect it? The fact is that there is a way to balance it out and to go to a user system. Other cities, other towns have done it. It is more fair. I oversaw, when I was mayor of Newark, a $65 million sewer expansion. When I took office, the flat fee was $250. Fourteen years later, because they went to a mixed system where mixed use and commercial paid by usage, that fee has gone up in fourteen years about $7 a year, and it's now around $350. And it went up a little bit after I left. So, also, I understand about the state. The question you have is, if we knew the state was going to require us, and DEEP was going to require us to upgrade our facility, both from DEEP and EPA, why did we wait till the last minute and have everybody come in? We've got to get this done in this pass because if we don't do it by July one, we're going to lose the $11 million. Talking about planning again. And non-sewer users like myself and other people are paying $8 million of that. And that $8 million was put in so the sewer fee wouldn't go up above $900. So, we have to start looking. It's not going to be an easy process, but to quote someone who once said, "The longest journey starts with the first step." Let's start looking at that as the first selectman is an ex-official member of the WPCA, should immediately start to work toward using some kind of flat fee combined with the usage fee, depending on the type of home, business, mixed use, commercial use it is. It's fair to everybody, but if you all start looking, it ain't going to happen.
Thank you. Next question?
Rebuttal, please?
Yes.
I'm not an ex-official member, I'm a full voting member of the WPCA. I want everyone to be aware of that. That needs to be clarified. But I'm not the chairman, I'm one of four other people, one of five that make the decision. My opponent mentioned earlier using the bully pulpit. I'm not a bully. I don't believe in bullies. That was a question earlier on the Board of Ed panel, we need to stop bullying in the town. I want to work cooperatively with everyone, and that's something I will do.
Thank you. Next question, beginning with Mr. Moshe. Do you think our current pension arrangement with police and firefighters is sustainable? If not, what would you recommend to fix it? If yes, why and how can it be sustained?
That's a very interesting question. And I will tell you, sitting on the Board of Finance, we look at these numbers every month. And our pension board, and I have to say, when administration and things go right, you have to give them credit, our pension board has done a fantastic job. I think actuarially, the pensions for both the fire and the police are in good shape. I think that our police unions are very reasonable in their request, as are the fire. So I don't think we're going to have a future problem with that. I think if the state starts to go back on talking about making us become part of the teacher pensions, that could be a problem for the taxpayers. But overall, the pension boards have done a good job for all the city pensions. The police and fire are actuarially sound, and we received our report from our auditors, and they are satisfied, still have the AAA bond rating, thanks to the work of Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, so I think we're okay there.
Mr. Marconi?
Thank you. Several years ago, we were on a defined benefit plan, which was really unsustainable. We know that in the private sector, and we saw it in the public sector. We were on a trajectory of unsustainability, it was a fact. I sat down with each union during negotiations, myself and Lori Fernandez, our director of human resources, who is wonderful. And we negotiated out of the defined benefit into a defined contribution. It took a lot. It was a lot of hard work. But we have now, every single employee in the town of Ridgefield going forward, still have some of the defined benefit, I want to be truthful there. But all new employees for the last five years have been on a defined contribution plan. To give you an example of what that means, the pensions on a DB plan, defined benefit plan, are running about seventeen percent of payroll for both police and fire, high-risk jobs, a lot of money. By going to a defined contribution, we were able to cut that to five percent. Five percent, that was tremendous. And I have to say, I want to thank the negotiators from the police, fire, highway, and all the town employees who so graciously stepped forward during the recession to offer cutbacks that we negotiated openly and honestly. We have a great group of people working for your town, and I thank them for their cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have one last question before our closing statements. So, beginning with Mr. Marconi, what actions do you propose to attract business and industry to Ridgefield?
You know, it's interesting, I have a report, and I'm going to address this quickly, on my desk that was put together by a team from Yale in 1950, on what, "Where is Ridgefield heading?" is the title of it, and you can come into my office and see it. And the conclusion was that not only did we have a parking problem, but we had a traffic problem. So moving forward, I don't think we've come too far, because we still have those issues. But what a great, great thing to talk about our community, that people love the downtown, that people drive Main Street so they can watch the people, so that they can see the store. The merchants want traffic on Main Street. You don't want a barren, desolate downtown. If you stop growth, you stop your community. And we've seen that across this country. We need to continue on the trend we've been, where we've been heading. We need to promote economic development. What we've done for retailers, the Board of Selectmen recently approved, an incentivized co-op that allowed a restaurant to take up some three or four thousand square feet in a vacant area. That was because the Board of Selectmen wanted to entice people to come into this town. And that was a recommendation of our Economic Community Development Commission. We need to continue to work together to look for creative ways to bring business, restaurants, other people to this community. We have a wonderful community here. The arts and culture are fabulous, and you all know that, and it's taken hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moshe? Yes, what actions do you propose to attract business and industry to Ridgefield?
I'm not sure about industry per se, but businesses. First of all, we want to attract new businesses, and I've talked to some businesses, getting back to the sewer fee. Some of the businesses' sewer fees went from fourteen to twenty thousand dollars because depending on the size of the restaurant, they're built by unit. Smaller restaurant went from about fourteen hundred to three thousand, so that's not a good incentive to bring new business in. Yeah, Main Street is beautiful, and I've mentioned before, all the cultural events. And you want traffic on Main Street, but when you're sitting there and you have semi-trail trailers spewing diesel fuel, blocking the crosswalks where people have to try and get across the road, that is not good traffic. That is distance that is for people to come downtown and to try and breathe that air and not even be able to have a good conversation. When we first moved to Ridgefield, our joy was to sit there and meet the people of Ridgefield, and I said, "My God, there are a lot of kids and dogs in this town." And there are. The other problem about picking up the poop, that's another thing we have to be concerned about, we can't blame anybody for that one. But I think we need to, and then, we have the Economic Development Commission, we have the Chamber of Commerce, we have the Village District, and it's been a tough time trying to pull them all together to work on the same page. Sometimes they have different agendas. But I think we need to pull the latest report that we had, that we had a study done with a consultant a couple of years ago, pulling that off the shelf to see what we can do about improving parking, more signage. And there is an organization called Main Street USA. For the large sum of $299, you can join this organization. They will provide assistance, seminars, and help how you can revitalize or reinvigorate your main street. We have to, as he said, start looking outside the box. That's how we have to do, start looking outside the box.
So, do you allow our first selectmen?
Can I have a rebuttal?
Yes, go ahead, yes.
Rebuttal yourself. The Village, we don't have a Village District, we don't have a Village District, we have a downtown Ridgefield group that works very hard from Governor Street down to Prospect Street to maintain the quality of shopping and business assistance that they can give all of their members. There are a lot of the people that do the holiday stroll, the celebration, all those wonderful events that we have in our town. It's a great town, let's keep it going. Thank you.
Okay, now our closing statements, a minute and a half, beginning with Mr. Marconi.
Thank you. As most of you know, I've been in this job for twenty years, and it's been an exciting twenty years. In the next four years, well, at least two, hopefully four, that we will continue to move our community forward. Applications have gone into planning and zoning for additional parking to increase the Governor Street block by fifty-three spots. That's a lot of parking, but it doesn't sound like a lot, but it really is a lot of parking to be added, where we can move employees to that area to open up other areas for retailers, for shoppers that want to come in and support our downtown. Arts and culture, I mentioned that before, but it hasn't been touched on tonight. The restaurants we have in this community are wonderful. And guess where the support comes from? The Playhouse, the Ridgefield Playhouse, Barbara Manders. It comes from ACT of Connecticut at Slumberjack, which you, the people, wanted us to do, which is fabulous. Events like that, the Keeler Tavern, the Aldridge Museum, Ware Farm National Park, the Prospector Theater, this beautiful library, all because of you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Moshe?
Twenty years, Rudy, last century you were first elected. Yes. But I'm wiser. Look, my background, you know, when you read a person's resume in his paper, you look at a resume, you say, "But that's impressive." When somebody sits up here and tries to tell you what they've done, then you think he's bragging. I have a lot of experience in government. As you all know, I was mayor for eight years, I was a fire commissioner, police commissioner, Board of Finance, Board of Finance here, parking authority, I've served on state and national boards. Yes, no, but people say you're being negative. Last thing in the world I want to be is negative about the wonderful aspects of Ridgefield. Those arts and cultures that Rudy's talked about, yes, but there is a significant concern among all people out, not all, many people out there, when I go door to door, that we're losing that small-town feel between the overdevelopments, intrusions into residential neighborhoods, again, the infamous eight thirty G. It appears that, some people said you were a big city mayor, it appears that what's happening is Rudy's trying to become a big town first elect. Thank you for being here, thank you, Rudy. You can rebut that one, Rudy.
Please thank our first selectmen. And they will be joined by the Board of Selectment candidates. Any questions? Any two candidates will have one minute to respond, okay? So we want those many candidates, or many questions, to be asked, so we're... I was never a school teacher. Okay. So, beginning with Mr. Marconi. Okay. What do you consider the best and worst things Ridgefield has done in the last twenty years?
The best and the worst? Best was elected, Rudy. The worst was re-elected, Rudy.
And you're taking the worst?
I know. I think that so many good things have happened in Ridgefield over the years. We had our kids live up here, they found our house for us here when we moved to Ridgefield. So there are great things that have happened, as Rudy's pointing out, nobody's taking that away. I think that the bundle package, the new ACT Theater, everything that we've talked about in this community, we love. But I think, as I was saying, if we want to keep that, those are going to be there, but it's the other aspects, public safety, you know what it's like on the roads, trying to walk, jog, even go out and get your mail, you have to look both ways on many roads in this town, the increased truck traffic on suburban roads. So the good parts are all here, we need to improve and stop the overgrowth and overtraffic.
Thank you. Mr. Marconi?
Thank you. The worst and best of the last twenty, there are many, many different things that have happened over the years, as you all well know. Some of the worst things is we've lost some really wonderful people, like Gene Tippinelli and others, who contributed so much to this community. Those people will be forever gone and missed. The best, though we can list them, starting with the bundle, in 2000, Bennett's Farm, preserving almost five hundred acres of open space. McKean's Farm, preserving forty-four acres of open space, that had already been subdivided for McManches, raising 3.4 million through contributions. That was the work that I did, and I'd go on about that, of open space that we preserve, the educational system, and the support we've given to our schools. Everything about this community, and public safety, well, I don't need to go on about that. You've all read how Ridgefield is number one, and we're going to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Connolly?
So, the first part, that's really easy. There's so many great things about this community. I've been here for thirteen years. You've got to turn the on button. Okay. So, I think there's a lot of amazing things about this community. We came up here about thirteen years from Norwalk. It wasn't there then, it wasn't a reaction to him. But we came because of the schools, because of the community, because of Main Street. And even the time that we've been here, to see the development of a library, and things like ACT and Prospect, and lots of things that Rudy had mentioned before, it is amazing, and I hope to see that continue over time. I think one of the worst things, not so much in our control, we've talked about tonight, the 830G, there's ways to be able to respond to that, I know there was the moratorium, but that's something that we're all concerned with. We all love this community because of the feel of it, and we want to maintain that, and that's something that I'm going to focus on.
Thank you. Ms. Kozlar?
Thank you. Is this one? Okay. All right. Twenty years is a long time, too, encapsulate, so what I'd like to, and I have to agree with what Mr. Marconi said and what Sean said, I mean, we can all expound about the wonderful things that have happened in Ridgefield. I'll focus on, in my tenure on the board, which has been eight years, one, I think, one of the best things that we've accomplished is purchasing the Slumberjake property, because it was forty-five acres in the middle of town that the taxpayers supported us on, and we were able to control our destiny, add some commercial base to, for revenue, but then still have some open space to use. On my tenure, one of the worst decisions, and it was unfortunate, that we weren't able to build the cell tower in northern Ridgefield on town property, because that would have generated over a hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue, which we could use every year. Rudy's laughing, because we say this every year. And because of the Connecticut Siding Council, the tower was constructed anyway, but it wasn't on town property, so we weren't able to realize that revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Savina?
When I think of Ridgefield, I think special people, special things, special times. The two or three things that really are positive to me is, the first one was the Prospector Theater. Now, the only way you could really describe that is say, "Wow." What the Jensen's have built there, a phenomenal facility, a phenomenal culture, a phenomenal... Just watching those people do what they do in there, I go out of my way to go there, anything, food, anything, because I think so highly of what they've done. The second is the library, which was a huge undertaking. I thought that was an incredibly important thing, because libraries are the hub of the community. They really are. The two things I think that are bad, you know, obviously I agree with Sean on 830G, but the thing I really miss most, and I hurt, is we've had a lot of friends and neighbors move out of Ridgefield because of affordability, really, really good people. And the thing that really makes Ridgefield special is its people, and the thing I really want to try to work is, we're a great town, we're great people, and whatever we can do to try to make it more affordable.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Manners?
I've been on the board the entire twenty years with Rudy, so I've had the great honor and pleasure of working with him to make a lot of the things that he talked about happen. Some of them I've been more involved with than others. I would like to just say for, to Mr. Moshe for a minute, that don't count on the arts and culture always being here. It's a big effort that goes on daily, and it's a huge commitment by volunteers in this town to help Allison keep that playhouse alive, to keep the symphony alive, to keep the corral alive. Concerts in the park, it takes all your donations. It is, those are things that need to be kept up and worked on.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Hebert?
Thank you. I've been in Ridgefield for thirty-eight years, so I can go back to twenty years, but, you know, I'm not one to look back and find, what was the worst decision? There were decisions that have been made that I may not have agreed with, but they weren't necessarily bad decisions. When you look at the... Where we are today, I mean, this is a great place to live. I raised three kids here, it's a vibrant town, you know, but we do face, as a result of our success, we face a lot of challenges today, but those challenges should inspire us to make Ridgefield even better today for our future generations. So, but as far as one of our biggest accomplishments, I think, in the term that I was on board, I'm the newbie, it's only four years, it's come out in four years, but we appointed this nine-member Citizens Committee that came up with a plan, a survey, and ended up with a wonderful, time's up, but a wonderful Slumberjake, use of Slumberjake.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next question, beginning with Mr. Marconi. What main attribute sets you apart from the other candidates?
Well, twenty years of experience, I think, sets me apart, except for Barbara, who shares that run. But I think in terms of attribute, bottom line is the understanding of the community. Having grown up here, remember riding bicycles around town, seeing what the town looked like then, and today, to be able to look at our downtown and see that it still looks the same, we've done a good job, we've held on to the character of our community, that is critical, that is very critical, and the attributes I have are how to continue to do that. I'm not going to keep, I'm going to keep some of my powder dry, because I think there are going to be additional debates, and I'm not going to tell everything tonight, but we have a lot of exciting ideas, moving forward to protect our community. I have a vision, a vision for the future that entails the past. I know where we came from, I know where we are today, and I know where you want to be tomorrow. Thank you.
Mr. Connolly?
Great, thank you. So, when I think of the community, there's a lot of different kinds of stakeholders, and a lot of different people in the community. And one of the really important segments of the population is older, experienced people who've been here for a long time, they have that history, they've seen that all the way through, and the board's been very well represented with that population. There's no one else on this board, who's running for this board, who's got young kids in the school district. So I've got my daughter, Tristan, is a junior at Ridgefield High School, my son, Jack, is an eighth grader at Scotts Ridge. We're going to be here for a while. Not to say that these folks can't give that perspective, but it's a reference group, so the people that I'm talking to, frankly, are different than some of the folks these guys are talking to. So it's just a different perspective that I'm going to be able to bring to the board and to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kozlar?
I think one of the main attributes I bring to the table is that I thoroughly prepare and research all of the agenda items that we have up for discussion before each meeting. I like to know what the history was, what the decisions previous to my tenure, why they were made, what we could may have made do differently. I like to look at all the minutes, to make sure the minutes are accurate, so I bring that perspective to the table. I also like to work together with the people at the board, I like to listen to the different ideas, I like to be collaborative, so that we can learn from each other and, you know, look at both sides and come to the best conclusion for all of Ridgefield. Though I am unique on the Board of Selectmen, because I was a Board of Education member for about ten years. I sat on the board when we had to work hard to get the bundle passed in town, and just remember that evening that it passed, sitting at Ancient Mariner with Marilyn Carroll and Mr. Marconi chanting that we had finally gotten, we're going to get room for the kids in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Savina?
Hello. What I bring to the table is my business experience as a sales and business executive, over thirty years' experience. The second thing I bring is twenty-nine years of experience living in Ridgefield. I've always believed in volunteerism, in trying to join the community and make it better. That's why over the years, I've served on the Planning and Zoning Commission, when the challenge in the early nineties was, we didn't want to become the Jersey, and we set the open space agenda. I was actually on the Board of Selectmen when we started at the school squeeze, and we got Scotland Project approved, as well started the road program. I then basically was on the Board of Finance when we had to implement the bundle, and lastly, I'm on the Police Commission. Community service is built into everything I do, because at the end of the day, you're raising a family, but you're part of a community, and you need to make the community better than when you came here. And that's really the thing I want to do now, is my wife and I are committed to stay here, and I want to make a difference to basically keep Ridgefield a great town again. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Manners?
What's why uniquely grand? Some people have called me relentless when I have an idea, and I think it's a good one, and I want to see it implemented and have it happen. That was a playhouse, and that was a chirp, that was the lights in the dog park, so that the people can walk their dogs at night. I think that I have the ability to bring action with my ideas, and I still have lots more ideas for Ridgefield.
Thank you. Mr. Hebert?
Thank you. I'm a business professional with over forty years' experience, I hate to admit that, in banking, finance, and real estate. I would, what I bring that's unique to the table is problem solving for complex problems and difficult problems. I'm the former chairman, I served as a former, as a chairman of the Ridgefield Housing Authority, and we had to develop, I led a team of commissioners to develop a plan to solve very difficult and complex problems facing everyone who's vulnerable in town, which is I've seen this. You know, for the past four years, I've had the privilege of serving as a Board of Selectmen, and what sets me apart now is that I bring a positive vision for a future that's fact-based, that's based on, you know, facts and making decisions for real issues that are facing town. I learned a lot in my first term, and I will use that experience going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moshe?
Thank you. What I bring to the table for the first time in eight years, is an opponent, and a different point of view, and I've already talked about my experience in government at both local, state, and national level. But I also have a commitment to people. I was honored by the Fairfield County United Way several years ago for my work and homelessness in Norwalk. I also have a community room named at the Liberation House after me, that deals with single moms who have drug problems, resident. I worked very hard to get that room and that building built through zoning and bureaucracy, and it's called the Rich Moshe Community Room. I have a commitment to people, I believe in people, I believe in the people in Ridgefield, and that attribute is something that I think everybody else up here has. We are concerned about you and the future of Ridgefield. That's what I want to try and make a little better. The past, the past, we have to look to the future.
Next question, beginning with Mr. Connolly. What can be done to alleviate the tax burden for people on fixed incomes? Senior citizens cannot afford to stay in town. Would you consider giving a significant property tax break for homes without schoolchildren to assist seniors?
So, great question, thank you. I think mention the person who brings that up quite a bit. There's a lot of folks who have those issues, and I would argue it's not just senior citizens, there's a lot of young families that have affordability issues as well, and there's a number of ways to deal with that. I, you know, from a tax perspective, the idea of giving a huge tax break, it's sort of like squeezing a water balloon, so you can fix that one side, but it makes it so much worse for the other side. So, there's different kinds of solutions, and I know there's been some things that have been done recently for some abatements, that people can defer that for a while. One of the things we have to look at is development, as Rudy was talking about before, even down in Branchville, if there's other opportunities for people to stay in town, and I think people do want to stay in town, whether you're a young family or people who've been here for a long time, is it the most efficient way to have someone live in a five-bedroom house when it's just you by yourself or you and your spouse? If there's other opportunities for more affordable housing, maybe that's something where you have a benefit, they can stay in town and have something that's affordable. Thank you.
Ms. Kozlar?
The tax burden and alleviating the tax burden on our citizens was the mantra of the Board of Selectmen this past budget season. We went through that item, that budget line item by line item-ish, point by point, to try to find and reconcile any kind of dollars to, the end result being that we had a zero percent tax increase. We were very proud of that, of that effort, and it took the whole, the whole five of us to do it. I think that Sean just mentioned, we did just institute the tax abatement increase from households that are, for senior citizens, if they're, increase their taxes from, for their salaries, to convert maintenance from sixty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand. from, or their salaries, deferred maintenance from sixty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand. So we are working on things like to alleviate the tax burden for people in our town. Thank you.
Mr. Savino.
Yes, one of my things about my background, having run businesses and sales organizations, and it's kind of where I think Rudy and I do have agreement, is we need to get our grant list growing. Right now, the last couple of years, we've only gotten five to six hundred thousand out of our grant list. And as I look around surrounding towns, they're taking business development seriously, bringing in commercial business, they're hiring full-time professionals to recruit business, because we know Connecticut's got some challenges. So my thing is, at this point, is I see a great product to sell, the count of Ridgefield, I see an economic development commission that's underutilized, and I think we could put together a program and start doing some recruitment to improve our tax and grow our grant list. Relative to seniors, I really think three things. One, we ought to raise the sixty-five thousand even higher, get one median household income in Ridgefield to one forty. Second thing we ought to do is we shouldn't charge seniors interest. I mean, the goal here is keep them in their houses, that's what we want to do. I have an eighty-eight-year-old mom, so you know how that goes. And last is, we haven't upped the credit since two thousand and seven, and it's at one thousand and forty-eight, and I think we could phase in an increase. So I think the combination of more revenue and phasing in an increase is definitely something that's doable and is something I'll support. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Manners.
Well, as Maureen said, we haven't increased the amount of money or that a person, well, that the income needs, if your income is less than sixty-five thousand, you can apply for a reverse mortgage. And the reverse mortgage, I think, is a huge benefit to seniors because it doesn't, it takes the tax money and we put a lien on your property. And that lien doesn't mature until the time when your property is sold. So you basically can stay in your house every year. I think that's a huge benefit. I think to increase the tax credit is, as Sean said, squeezing the balloon. You take it from someplace, you have to take it, you have to put it somewhere else.
Thank you. Mr. Heber.
Thank you. I don't want to reiterate, but I will agree with Maureen. You know, that was a mantra for us during the budget season, and to talk and discuss how we can help benefit the seniors. One of the problems we talked, we do have to increase the grant list. That's been a challenge we've been looking at now for the four years that I've been on the board. This past year, actually, our grant list went down, you know, we received, we had eight hundred thousand benefit from the grant list, which was lovely. But the other thing that I want to talk about just very quickly, is we talk about the negatives of eight thirty G. One of the benefits of eight thirty G is it does provide affordable housing for our seniors, okay, whether it's on the rental side or whether it's on the purchase side. So that's something we can, when we get into the eight thirty G discussion, you know, there are some positives to it, however, there are some negatives, which we will talk about as well. But those are the things I think we can do, and one of the things I would be concerned about phasing in additional tax cuts or tax credits, would, you know, we have to find that money elsewhere.
Thank you. Mr. Moshe.
Well, as everybody's pointed out, if you give to one, you have to take it from somewhere else, and that is the difficulty. But, yes, I worked on the Board of Finance, we had a zero tax increase, but to many of the seniors you talked about, they had a sixty percent increase in their sewer fee, and that's a sewer tax, and we don't know if it's not going to go up either. I think that the efforts by the Board of Selectmen to try and give a larger, higher income for those who are deferring the taxes, I'm not sure reverse mortgages are the answer, Barbara, because there's been a lot of controversy and abuse of the reverse mortgage, many people not realizing what they're getting into. If it's too good to be true, that true, it's not going to work. Reverse mortgages have a lot of problems. We need to grow our grant list. As I mentioned before, we need to seek a way to get more grants, and federal and state grants into town that will help stabilize the tax bill, keep them low, and will, and also give more support to the Economic Development Commission to bring those new businesses in and will build our grant list.
Thank you. Mr. Marconi.
As far as the senior tax credit program, we have the general tax credit that everyone gets over sixty-five, it's about eleven hundred dollars a year. Then we have the tax deferment program that we just raised, your bottom-line income on your ten forty from fifty-five to sixty-five thousand. We expect maybe three to five more, people, we're not sure. But no matter what we do, there's a cost associated with that, and the question is, how far do we go? So we felt this year was a good first step, let's go fifty-five to sixty-five. But I want to say something about senior housing. You don't have to go affordable. We could build senior housing tomorrow over by the dog park, we don't have to worry about eight dash thirty G, and we can click the standards we want in ourselves, and there's money available at the state. That's the one area where there's money available for housing. As far as other grants, they're gone. We don't qualify for grants. Hartford looks at us as R-I-C-H-F-I-E-L-D.
Thank you. So, beginning with Ms. Kozlar. What are the top two financial issues facing Ridgefield, and what specific solutions do you have as people of this community to resolve those issues?
Do you have to start with me on that one? Okay, so the top two financial issues, we have the budget. We always have to tackle our budgets. Every year, we have the town budget, we have the school budget, so you have to look at both of that in aggregate to see what that's going to do to our mill rate and how that's going to affect everyone's bottom line. Unfortunately, and I'd like to echo what everyone here said, we do have to add to the grant list because unless we can address the mill rate, and we are looking at the property taxes that people are paying on their homes, and we need to really develop more of a commercial base so that we can get some more commercial taxes to alleviate the strain that we have on our taxpayers. And the solutions, I think I would have to agree that we have to work very closely with the ECDC because they've been doing a phenomenal job for us in trying to bring and keep Main Street alive, and also all of the cultural centers that everyone has talked about, and Barbara worked so hard on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Savino.
One area I've spent a lot of time researching is the grant list. Number one challenge is we have to grow our grant list. If you're not growing in my business, which is selling software and IT, you're dying. We have to grow it. And right now, we're only investing about five thousand in the Economic Development Commission. We've got the product, we've got some very talented people, the chamber I know is motivated. We need to get it going because in the research I did, Ridgefield's only getting about eight percent of its revenue right now from commercial. There's empty buildings, we could definitely do something there. So, job one, and it's what I want to really focus on, is we've got to get that grant list going, because if we're going to keep our world-class schools, we've got to get that. The second biggest challenge, I think, is the sewer project. It's starting to feel a lot like the bundle in two thousand and one. The project has really got three things to it. We need to bring it in on time and on budget, and it's already got a five-million-dollar challenge before we even put a spade in for it. We've got to build the industrial management system to get that happening. The second thing we do is we need to implement user-based pricing, and last, we need to raise the hookup fees for basically developers. So, thank you.
Sorry, sorry. Ms. Manners.
Everyone has said it, and it's true, it's the budget that we work so hard on is the biggest issue every year. The Board of Selectmen works as hard as it can to keep the increase as low as it is, and sometimes Rudy and I have major disagreements about the extent to which we do that. I think sometimes the infrastructure suffers some because we haven't spent enough, because we're trying to keep the taxes so far down. So Rudy does a terrific job with that, but Joe is right, the sewer use fees are a big problem, and I think we need to look at different ways of costing them. I think a use fee would be a good idea, I think there are different ways to implement it, but I think the idea that we spent eight million dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Manners, sorry. Mr. Heber.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. What are the top two financial issues facing Ridgefield, and what solutions would you have to resolve those issues?
Okay, thank you. The big, I think, to me, the biggest financial issue that we have in town is, well, twofold coincidentally. Nearly ninety percent, or over ninety percent of the tax burden falls on residents. People and businesses are leaving the state of Connecticut, and they're leaving our town. As a result of that, we're losing jobs, and we have declining home values. That's my biggest concern, declining home values. Declining home prices result in declining revenue to support our town services. We also send about ninety-five cents out of every dollar to Hartford, a paper to support the major cities. And so what can we do about that? We need to make sure that our elected officials understand the economic realities and help figure out a way to deal with the real problems and live within them.
Thank you, Mr. Heber. Mr. Moshe.
Well, I think, we've talked about before, I think the sewer plant expansion is going to be a considerable concern. We still don't have, we hear eleven million's there, it's sitting up in deep, and it must be deep in deep pocket because we still haven't seen it yet. I'm not saying we won't get it, but we don't know when we're going to get it. The other concern that I have, and listening to the Board of Ed, as they move forward with budgets, what, how are we going to be able to keep our tax base stable, not have large tax increases, but continue to fund the Board of Ed at the level they think they're going to need to raise the DRGs and to keep the student achievement scores so high? That's going to be a challenge. How we deal with that is going to take a lot of ingenuity and a lot of cooperation. That's why I think it's important for the first selectmen to have a choice or a chance to do some interviewing with the new superintendent, because they're going to have to work close together.
Thank you. Mr. Marconi.
The two top financial issues, I heard the grant list, I understand that. Our grant list depreciates about ten percent a year in the property and automobiles, so we need to grow about ten percent just to break even, and we've been able to do that. We've been okay, and plus, we've made a little bit, that was mentioned earlier. But to grow the grant list isn't going to come out, come without any other issues. You're talking about growing the town, we're hearing development, we're hearing traffic, oh, but grow the grant list, let's bring more in. You can't have it both ways. You can't have it both ways. What we're talking about is smart growth. What we're talking about is looking at pockets like Branchville and developing that slowly to bring in an alternative to a Beringer-Angelheim, an alternative to Schlumberger. I want to talk, someone mentioned the ECDC, they get a little, almost fifteen thousand dollars a year, not five, and they've done a great job with it, but we need to work with them even more, and what's being said here, we need to follow up on.
Thank you. Mr. Connolly.
So fun to go last, because all the good answers have been taken already, but, so I agree with a lot of what's been said, but one thing that hasn't been said is the uncertainty from the state. We, as Dick and I said, on the Board of Finance, and we don't know sometimes, as we're trying to set the budget and anticipate what that mill rate is going to be and what your tax increase is going to be, we don't know how much money we're getting from the state in some cases, particularly around the education side, so from the educational cost reimbursements and other kinds of issues. So we don't know what's coming from the teacher pension issue. So that creates uncertainty, and it's difficult for us to manage around that. We've tried to be very conservative, so one of the things that we've done as a Board of Finance is we've been very conservative with, or essentially, our rainy day fund, the fund balance. But one of the things that we'll need to do, and I know Rudy's done a lot of this, is advocate, go up to the state, you know, part of cost of the programs like that, to ensure that we're having our voice heard, that we're able to represent the needs and desires of small towns like Ridgefield, so the state can understand that.
Thank you. So we are going to begin our closing statements, a minute and a half from each of the candidates, and we'll go alphabetically. So, Mr. Connolly, a minute and a half.
You can have me twice, you're lovely. So, let me say, I'm up here tonight, I'm running for this board because I deeply care about this community. I'm not a politician, I, twenty-five years of professional business experience, I'm not trying to be the next senator or anything else like that. I'm here because I love this town, I love being part of it, I have great pride in it, and I want to see it grow in the smart ways that we all want to, right? That look, that feel of town is so important. One of the things I love reading in the Ridgefield press is, and even some of the things online, is looking back at the history of Ridgefield, and not just twenty-five years, but fifty, a hundred, two hundred years ago. And I think as we think about the decisions we make here as a Board of Selectmen, our time horizon shouldn't be what happens next year or in five years. We've got to measure this in decades, what's going to happen in twenty-five years and fifty years? So it's that deep pride and focus on maintaining what we have is very, very important to me. I've been, since I've been in this town, I've been connected on everything, my kids are involved with, I've coached gazillion sports teams in soccer, I've been involved volunteering with the kids' triathlon, so I've always been very well-connected. And again, the point I raised before, nothing against anybody else, but I'm really the only one who's got that reference group of young kids in the schools, and the other segments are really important, but that's also a very important segment. So I'm thrilled to be here, and thank you for coming out, and hope you all vote for me.
Thank you. Mr. Heber.
Again, I, what I, I would like to thank our moderator in the League of Women Voters and everybody for coming out tonight and listening to us. I can wholeheartedly say that Ridgefield is just a wonderful place to live. I raised my family here, I have three children, they're all gainfully employed and on my payroll, and doing very well. In this election season, you know, we're reminded of the opportunities that we have to continue to build on all that is good in town. For the past four years, I've had the great privilege of serving as one of your selectmen and listening to the voices and opinions of many, many of our residents. I have a track record of thoroughly reviewing the budgets, researching all sides of issues, and objectively making decisions that are truly in the best interest of the town. Ridgefield is well-known for its distinctive identity as a New England Rockwell town. I'm running for reelection because I bring common sense approach and realistic solutions that we need to balance growth and change while maintaining the character of our town. Voters can count on my passion for excellence, my commitment to a town government that is open and fiscally responsible, and with, I will, with a vision for a bright future, I can ask for your continued support in your vote on November fifth. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Manners.
Ms. Kozlar.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Kozlar.
I seek reelection to the Board of Selectmen and will work hard to expand on my accomplishments, whether it's scrutinizing the annual town budgets to minimize tax increases while maintaining Ridgefield's triple-A bond rating, or thoughtfully adding to our commercial base while maintaining the small-town feel we all love. I will continue to make every effort to shepherd the town of today into the promising Ridgefield of tomorrow. The next few years will bring new challenges. We have embarked on the process of a needs and location assessment for our public safety departments. Taking a hard look at the condition of the police and fire departments and analyzing the optimum space usage for the Ridgefield's future is a critical undertaking and one I am eager to actively participate in. We must be mindful of our aging population and their needs, needs I am very sensitive to, having been the primary caregiver of my elderly mother for many years, and we must be mindful of our future generations and continue to support our exceptional public school system. As unfunded mandates and taxes continue to burden our community from Hartford, we need to protect the small allocation of funding we currently receive from the state and ensure further demands are not placed upon our taxpayers. Our work is cut out for us in the months and years ahead, and I am prepared for the challenge. I ask you to vote for me, Maureen Kozlar, on November fifth, and allow me to work for you in the best interests of all Ridgefielders for the next four years. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, all the volunteers who made this debate possible, and all the audience members who have taken their time to take part in tonight's. and all the audience members who have taken their time to take part in tonight's discussion. Thank you.
Now, Ms. Manors.
I want to start by saying thank you. Thank you for having had the confidence. Thank you for having had the confidence in me to let me serve you the last 22 years. I'm sure that on occasion I've disappointed you in some manner or other, but on balance, I would like to believe that for most of you, the pluses have outweighed the minuses. As you can tell from tonight, I am not a great speaker. However, I am a good doer, and I am a thinker, and I am a good lawyer, which is another skill I bring to the board. I also think every day when I get up that living in Richfield is a blessing. It is a blessing that I never take for granted. Richfield has even me a home, and I try every day in every way I can to give back, and I hope you will let me continue to give back. Working with Rudy has been one of the great privileges of my life. Working with the rest of the board over the years has also been a privilege. We don't always agree, in fact, we often vehemently disagree, but we respect each other, and I think we like each other. And I think that everyone on this board cares about Richfield, that we are all empathetic people, and we love you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Marconi.
Thank you. Thank you to the League for tonight and to the rest of the candidates up here for sharing with the public your ideas, thoughts, and vision for the future. I want to talk a little bit, I hear it's a lot going on social media, I'm not a social media guy, but it's full of misinformation relative to the sewers. I ask that you contact my office if you want the facts to understand what we're doing with the sewer plant, which is a mandate that we have no choice on. The voters voted on this at a referendum, and it passed. We're moving forward with that. If we stop now, we lose the $11.5 million, and yes, it is there. We've confirmed all of that. But the vision for our town, moving beyond those stinky topics, the vision for our community is what I think I bring to the table, to look at traffic and address it, to look at development and address it, to look at 8-30G and figure out outside the box how we can address those issues. These are all things, believe it or not, that are on my desk today and are being worked on every single day. What's going on involves your community to bring a safe with the best police department, the best level of EMS services in the state of Connecticut, the highway department, every one of them, as I said before, these people work for you, and they truly do, and I make sure of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moshe.
Thank you. Thank you to the League and all of you for spending some time with us. Just one more point about the grants. I know that other towns are still getting grants, and things are freezing up so much, maybe $11 million won't be coming to us. But aside from that, more importantly is the fact that you're here today, and you're listening to everybody on the stage, very dedicated people who have a vision, different vision, but that's what makes democracy, that's why we have a race issue. More importantly is the last two elections in this town for first selectmen, we were unopposed, only had about a 30% turnout. I think the last referendum only had about a 9% turnout. That's terrible. It's up to you to make sure you vote, get your friends out to vote. Both parties are working on knocking on doors. There is no more important thing that people have sacrificed or have served in the military than give you the right on November 5th to go out there and choose some of the people that are up here. It's your obligation, it's our obligation to try to run the best campaign that we can to give you the most information. Thank you, Madam Moderator, you did a fantastic job. Thank you to the League. Again, thank you to you, and thank to everybody up here.
Mr. Savino.
Thank you to the League again for a fantastic event. Kathy and I are recent Pimpin' Esters. Our youngest just went off down to Georgia. And we went through a lot of soul searching in the last year in terms of this, and we decided we're going to fight for this town, we're going to stay in this town because we love this town. So, when you look at really what I'm here to do is, I moved here in 1990, and I love this town, and I'm going to fight for it. And my platform is a really simple one. First, it's protect Richfield's neighborhoods and quality of living. We have a lot of stuff slipping into gaps right now, holes, traffic, sewer fees, senior credits. We can address those as a Board of Selectmen, and we should. Second is, we do need smart targeted growth because we do need money to fund this beautiful town of ours. Third is, we can make a town, the town more efficient. I know the guys here work very hard for the 1%, but in the world I live in, it's going to be done to me lately. We got to get that. And last but not least, we have to protect their schools. Those schools basically prepare my daughters for their college and professional lives. We need to help however possible can to find a great superintendent, the next Deborah Love, who's going to be with for a while and build a franchise with us. We need to basically maintain our school buildings. And last but not least, we need to fight so when anybody in Hartford gets a smart idea about regionalization, we need to pound them into the ground. Because this is our, this is our town. This is our home. This is where we make our stand, and this is where we got to keep Richfield the best town, and that's what I'm proud to do. So, please vote with me on November 5th. Thank you.
Please say thank you to our candidates.